All right, folks, let's come back to order here if we could. And we have the next two docketed items that I'll ask Ms. Fox to read, please, for us.
Docket PZ 16-014, application has been filed by FJAW LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 9.0 acres. The property is located at 1720 Commerce Parkway, LaGrange. The proposed change is from R2 Residential to C3 General Business District. And docket PZ 16-015, application has been filed by FJAW LLC for the approval of a development plan on approximately 9.0 acres. The property is located at 1720 Commerce Parkway, LaGrange. The proposed zoning is C3 General Business District.
All right, thank you very much. And again, Ms. Alvey, I'll call on you for the presentation or the introduction of the dockets.
Sure. As Ms. Fox stated, this is a zoning map amendment and development plan for property located at 1720 Commerce Parkway. The area that is being rezoned is nine acres. I believe the overall property is around 34, 35, and it's divided by Commerce Parkway. This portion here is around 18 acres, and obviously, they own across the street as well. But the area that is being asked to be rezoned is only nine of this 18 acres here. The monor plat, there was a monor plat to create this nine-acre tract, as I just showed here. And I've got everything, it looks like it's upside down, but it's upside down, so it orientates everything to the north, just so all the maps and everything line better. So this is the monor plat that was sent out and reviewed by agencies for comments to create the nine-acre tract. The applicant is only requesting to rezone that nine-acre portion. The remaining nine acres will remain R2 Residential, which is the existing zoning. This is the current zoning. You'll see, again, R2, it has some R4 here. This is the location of the Oldham County Health Department. This is I-71. Of course, all the area around I-71 is Zone CO1 Conservation. And then there just touches a little bit in the map, the part of the PUD, which is This is the future land use map. It does show that the future, our future land use map does show that the area that is being asked to be rezoned, the future land use is commercial industrial. The site has not been the subject of any previous planning commission actions. This is looking into the property from Commerce Parkway. You can see there's the appropriate zone change notice sign in the picture, as well as I-71 at the rear of the property. This is the west view along Commerce Parkway. And you can see through the tree line there, a little bit there, there's the location of Oldham County Health Department. This is the east view along Commerce Parkway. And again, you can see off in the distance there, that is the Oldham Oaks Apartments. This is the north view, which all of this is owned by Clifford Properties as well. Again, this is just a south view, looking from on the other side of the walking trail, back into the property. And again, this is I-71 along through there. There is a pump station access road located on the property. Goes back and has a curb cut off of Highway 146. This is the tree buffer area that is noted on the plan to buffer between the C3 zoning and the R4 zoning. Give me an idea what the tree line looks like there. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning from R2 Residential to C3 General Business on a nine-acre portion of the parcel. The applicant wishes to change the zoning to construct an automobile dealership. The proposed use of the site for automobile sales is a permitted use in C3 zoning. This is an outward view of the development plan. We'll zoom in a little bit closer. The applicant intends to develop the property by constructing two buildings. There'll be a sales and service building here, which is approximately 44,000 square feet. And then there will be a collision center here, which is 14,850 square feet. They are proposing two access points along Commerce Parkway. You'll see those highlighted here in green. The signage for the project will be determined by General Motors, and once finalized, the applicant will return with a program for signs for review and approval by the planning commission. The current plan meets all other zoning regulations, such as setbacks, parking, lot coverage, impervious surface, and floor area ratio. And then if you look in the applicant's justification statement, they outline numerous points of where it meets the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. That is all that I have.
All righty, Ms. Alvey, thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for staff at this time, at this point? Any questions? Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Amy's going to ask this for Ms. Albertson, because she would ask if she were here. Are we all, are we okay on all the handicap parking regulations?
Yes, sir. We are. Thank you.
Anything else from staff, I mean, questions to staff? Additional questions to staff?
Ms. Bonnet.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Bonnet, Ms. Bonnet, sorry.
There's the mention of the water main that runs down the south and west side. Is that, that gravel road construction drive, that's pre-existing and pretty much is on top of that water? I was trying to find the location of that water main on the plat.
Might be a question that Mr. Garber...
Yeah, he may be able to, because I think that they had them maybe correct that on the plan, because I, let me get my bearings. I think there's a 24-inch, it's hard to see on this plan, that runs along the back. I can pull the plans and look, but Dave Garber, the engineer, may be able to answer that question.
Okay, I just didn't know if, because they, they had stated at the technical review committee, I believe, that they didn't want that area, they wanted to avoid that area during construction, and that the grade not changed, so...
Right.
...to be concerned.
Yeah, that, that drive is existing already...
Right.
...that they actually use to access their pump station back there.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that they'll use that for a construction entrance and exit at any point, but you can ask the applicant, they'll be able to clarify that.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? All right.
And we have traffic here as well, from Neil Schaefer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'll pull that up for that, and then we can...
We'll need to get her sworn in, if we could. And get you sworn in, and we'll get your name and address for the record.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Good morning, my name is Karen Mohamadi. Again, with Neil Schaefer at 200 Whittington Parkway.
Spell your last name, please.
Sure. M-O-H-A-M-M-A-D-I. 200 Whittington Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, Suite 205. And we were asked to do the traffic analysis for this site. These are first two slides, you've already seen in Amy's presentation, the site plan. So I'll just jump right into our scope of work. We did a review of the site. We collected project information from the county. We looked at previous traffic studies that were done for Kroger and Oldham Oaks, and then we actually did traffic counts.
Scoot over just a little bit, so we can get you all to speak a little louder, so we can...
Over here?
Yeah, that'd be fine. That's where the microphone is, and it's a little hard to hear, I think, so...
Thank you. Basically, we looked at two different intersections, the proposed intersection with the auto dealership. We assumed worst-case scenarios, so we assumed all the traffic would be using one driveway. We also looked at the intersection with Commerce Parkway and the overpass in Allen Lane. Our analysis considered three scenarios, the 2016 existing traffic, which is what we got from our traffic counts. We looked at 2018 base, which included just general growth rate, it's a 2.5% per year, as well as traffic from Kroger and Oldham Oaks. And then we looked at a 2018 build year that included traffic from the auto dealership. Our peak hours were 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. We use IT trip generation to come up with additional trips for automobile sales, and based on the size of the proposed facility, we have about 113 entering, or trips in the morning, and 136 new trips generated in the evening. We did capacity analysis for all three scenarios, the first one being the existing conditions. And at Allen Lane and Commerce Parkway, traffic is operating very well, level services at A in the morning, B in the p.m. When we look at 2018 traffic without the dealership, we see that A.M. is still operating very well, the level service B, but the p.m. traffic will fail without the dealership. One thing to note is the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has already said that they anticipate that intersection needing a signal. So we also did an analysis with that as a signalized intersection, that's the second group. As you can see, the level service improves to a level service B in the p.m. peak. Our final analysis was with the auto dealership traffic, and it's slightly worse under a unsignalized intersection or four-way stop, which is to be expected. If it's signalized, we're looking at good level service with a level service B at Allen Commerce. And then we also looked at that single driveway on Commerce Parkway, which would operate with good level services of A, B, and C. Okay, to summarize, right now, the four-way stop at Commerce and Allen is operating well with level services A and B. By 2018, the p.m. is going to fail, regardless of whether the auto dealership is there. It will be operating at a level service F. Again, Traffic Transportation Cabinet has already said that they realize there's a need for a signal at that location. This analysis was based on projected traffic. It was not based on a signal warrant analysis, so I can't say that for sure in 2018, that a signal will be warranted. It'll need to be studied, and based on the manual and uniform traffic control devices to see whether it is warranted in 2018. We also did an auxiliary lane analysis to see whether right turn or left turn lanes were needed at the proposed driveway, the dealership, and neither a left turn or a right turn lane was warranted at that location. So basically, the operation is going to deteriorate in the future, regardless of whether the proposed dealership is there, but the traffic signal at the overpass and Allen Lane should keep things at an acceptable level of service.
Okay. That's your presentation?
That's it.
All right. Commissioners, do you have questions for...
I do want to add something.
Oh, okay. Mr. Arvin?
I just want to clarify the issue of Allen Lane and the traffic signal. There is a project that we're currently working on, we're in the right-of-way phase, or just about to start the right-of-way phase, to straighten out Allen Lane and widen it, and also go underneath the railroad track. So we have two projects in Oldham County, 393 and Allen Lane, that will have an underpass under the railroad. That will connect Kentucky 146 ultimately with Kentucky 53 at Blake Moore Lane. When, in that project, that's where we're going to analyze the warrant analysis for traffic signal at Commerce Parkway and Allen Lane, and a new overpass over I-71.
All right. Any additional questions for the traffic analysis? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Horton.
Thank you. Operating at a level F at those particular hours there, in your experience, or is there empirical evidence as to how much a signal would change that level? Is there any, any, either through your experience or an estimate, or empirical evidence as to what a light would do to that level F, when and if they install that?
Let me just jump back up to this. So this, here's the unsignalized, so you're seeing a level service F, but then, when we put the signal, which is the second group here, improves it to a level service B, which I...
Oh, I see.
So it's going to improve greatly.
I see it, I just, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Still have, you know, a couple of spots that, you know, during peak hour, level service D, but that's an acceptable level of service, given it's peak hour traffic.
Thank you, that's fine. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, any additional, yes, Ms. Smith.
I notice on the p.m. traffic hours, you use between 4:30 and 5:30. Is that the norm that you always use?
What we do when we do the traffic counts, we usually count within a three-hour window. So we'd be like a 7:00 to 10:00, a 6:30 to 8:30, depending on the location. So in the p.m., I think we did a 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we actually count those numbers to figure out what are the, and we do it in 15-minute increments. So we look to see which consecutive four 15-minute increments had the highest volume of traffic.
But on page six, it says the p.m. peak traffic volume, it was determined to be between 4:30 and 5:30, and I didn't know what time the Rawlings group closes, and I wondered if that was taken into consideration.
They let out at 5:00.
They let out at 5:00.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
Was the traffic analysis done, what's the distance that you do, the traffic analysis? Seems like, you know, right there, Commerce and Allen Lane, and I guess, maybe you looked at down at the Kroger end also, I guess. Did you go to the other side of Commerce Parkway towards 53?
We only did the analysis for the two intersections, the one existing, and then the proposed driveway.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Arvin.
I know your study found no need for turning lanes into this project. My question is, is there sufficient right-of-way already public for future turning lanes, as this property, across the street, it's developing, at some point, I envision from my point of view, that there, as it develops, at some point in time, a wider area of right-of-way is going to be needed.
We, and I'll answer that, because when that road was constructed, we got 100-foot of right-of-way, in most cases, all from the entire three-mile stretch of Commerce Parkway, with anticipation that it was going to have to be widened in the future. So there's plenty of, plenty of right-of-way.
Thank you.
And what we're going to do is, we've been talking with Neil Schaefer about doing an analysis of, when do we start actually widening the road? Because even though the analysis showed that turning lanes, I mean, yeah, turn lanes were not required with this development, we know that when the volumes go up, that we're going to have to have at least a widening of Commerce Parkway throughout its length.
Okay, is that all, Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Okay, any additional questions? For staff? Okay, all right, thank you. Seeing none now, we'll move into presentation by the applicant, or representative, and others in support of the application. Craig Mile, I assume you'll be starting us off here, and we'll get everyone sworn in, and then get the name and addresses as they present.
Where'd you put the presentation?
She put it down.
This one?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Beach Craig Mile, 105 South First Street, and I represent FJAW LLC, a Kentucky corporation, doing business as Champion Chevrolet, Buick, GMC. And Dave Garber, professional engineer and land surveyor, and will be doing the engineering presentation for us.
Okay, all right, and get you two sworn in, if we could, Ms. Fox.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And Mr. Craig Mile, before you get started, I overlooked, I didn't ask Ms. Stuber if she had anything that she needed to add, as far as, before we get started, you know, with the, with the presentation. Sorry about that, but we need to get you sworn in too, Ms. Stuber.
I got asked to warn earlier, but that's okay.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, you were, okay, we're good then.
It is in the city of LaGrange, so access on and off Commerce is not under my jurisdiction. I believe they're going to address the issue with runoff onto 71, and since TRC, they've come back with quite a bit of green infrastructure that would meet our post-construction ordinance. And so I think Dave's going to elaborate on that, but those are comments I have.
Okay, sorry for the oversight there, but just wanted to make sure you were, got your, got your words in, so, okay, Mr. Craig Mile, sorry for interrupting, but if you want to start your presentation, that'd be great.
Well, I'll try to keep mine short, but, you know, this, this is a request to change the zoning to commercial along Commerce Parkway, which should seem somewhat intuitive, but there is a process, and the process is that, I'm sure you're familiar with this, we make the present, the actual final authority is the city of LaGrange. We present to you all, you make a recommendation, an approval or disapproval in a recommendation to the LaGrange Council, who then hears it, and it then goes into effect, and the map is changed. So primarily, your responsibility is to make findings a fact and recommendations, and that's what our engineering process is going to be. Dave will probably repeat everything I will say, so I'm really going to defer the entire presentation to our engineer, Dave Garber. I have made recommendations of findings on the plat, on the application here, in our justification statement, which I will probably address in our conclusion, in which we maintain that the plan, proposed plan, proposed use is consistent with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, not just consistent, but it supports and meets the exact purpose of the plan, which was to develop a commercial area along the Parkway and the development of the Chevrolet dealership along Commerce Parkway, will dovetail in with the other commercial developments. It's compatible with the neighborhood. There's, you know, business next doors, the Health Department, we have the Ford dealership down at the other end, we have Rocketman has a storage facility up and down there, there's an engineering firm, Commerce Parkway is really coming along. And so we just want to make sure that our development was environmentally sensitive, and to that extent, one of the key aspects of Dave's plan is a rain garden, as a detention basin, where it goes underneath the expressway into the Curry Fork Basin to slow down the water. It's a fairly gradual slope that goes down from Commerce Parkway, so there won't be a lot of speed picking up. The impervious surfaces has been looked at and approved by the, by the planning commission, I mean, by planning the zoning, and they're, they're fine with the area of the slopes. And basically, we think this would be good for the economy of the county, improve tax revenues, workplace development, and alleviate traffic concerns along Highway 53, First Street. You know, get some of the traffic off there, make it easier for big trucks to get in and out, you know, without so much difficulty going behind where they are there on First Street right now. So at this point, I will pass the ball over to the brains of the outfit, and let Dave Garber take over. Thank you.
Thank you. Garber, just need to name an address for the record, please.
Certainly. David Garber, with Garber Chilton Engineers and Land Surveyors, 2249 Commerce Parkway, LaGrange. I appreciate all the accolades of the brains of the outfit. I think the brains that are on there. And Mr. Fred Tolstorf is here also, if there are some questions afterwards, dealing specifically with the dealership. I'll go over some of the highlights of the, of the plan. First, some things that came up at technical review, dealt with water lines. There is a water line all along the front of the property, and what came up at technical review was just the size. So we've got that corrected. And then also, there's, there's a water line along here, and those are all existing easements, and they will be away from our development, so there will be no crossing. Now, in the back, in the back here, along, along here, there is a sanitary sewer, which we will tap into, as well as a force main sanitary sewer. So the, the gravity is flowing towards the pump station, there's a pump station right here. So the gravity line flows to the pump station, and then the pump station shoots it back out into force main. So all the utilities are, are there that we need, a lot of site distance, and we decided on placing two entrances for more practicality and the ease of vehicles, delivery trucks. So we were looking at, if a, you know, if a big delivery truck comes in, they'll be able to come back here now and offload the cars, and without having to turn around on site, then they'll be able to continue going on back out this way, or vice versa, if they come in from the east, and then they can go out on the west. Situated in a great location between, you know, exit 18, exit 22, as far as delivery traffic and, and having clients come to look at the cars. There will be, we set up the main, this will be the main, the main building here, and we'll have a showroom on this side, and all the service bays over here. That part of the, of the plan is similar to what we designed back over on the Ford. And again, Ford, as Ford dictated, General Motor dictates a lot of what happens here, as far as the way the building's looking, how the setup is, and I will, I'll have some examples of how that works. We put the collision center over on the left side, and we have the same thing here, where a vehicle can come and offload a car that needs service, whether, you know, be a wreck or other, other type. And then they've got plenty of room to come back out, and multiple routes to get back out. We've been fairly generous in the sides of the aisles to make sure that, in the parking spaces, that everyone has a nice, safe environment. We've added sidewalks up all around the building. The, the light green that you see mostly in these areas are, represent grassy areas. We've highlighted, say, areas that will have shrubs, things of that nature, and a little darker green, as well as trees. And in the landscape aisles, the islands here, we've made them kind of a tan color, just so I could highlight and show you, those are all interior landscape areas, whether it may be mulch, not sure exactly what the, the final product will be there, but every one of those will have trees. There'll all be trees in all of those areas, and they, it meets all of the landscape requirements. Back on the, on the detention basin, we've, in talking with Beth, we were looking to have something that could also furnish a little more of a cleansing of the water before we exit out onto the state. So we're going to be designing, you call it somewhat like a rain garden, where you've got certain type of plants and things like that, that you will run the water through, it helps cleanse them, give it an opportunity to soak in, more so than a regular detention basin, and then we'll send it on out to the state. I've discussed this with the state, and told them, we would give them some, they wanted some final runoff numbers, and I told him that, and he just requested to add at the time of construction, so he's not looking for anything right now. But the detention basin is designed for, you know, 100-year storm, to be able to handle the water, have enough so it won't, won't overflow, and all of the, the majority of the water will all go back to the basin, very little will come out front. We've, we've set up the path of the water to go towards the basin. You can see some of these lines, these represent some underground lines where we have catch basins and drainage pipes. Let's see, we have, we've incorporated where the, the city has access over here to get back to their pump station. At one time, we thought about maybe bringing them over onto the site, and then having a place for them to go back. We just decided to leave that entirely alone. for them to go back. We just decided to leave that entirely alone and let that remain a gravel road for them, and that, we've discussed that with them, and they're perfectly happy with that. There is a, a pipe that crosses Commerce Parkway right here. It's bringing water from the north, and we've accommodated that water. Right now, it's not an extremely large amount of water, but as the properties to the north are developed, they will be required to have their own detention, so we're not anticipating any larger amounts of water, you know, coming across the, the road. We presented this, we had a meeting with Mayor of LaGrange and Public Works and reviewed everything with them, and they, they were well pleased with what the layout looked like. They had no concerns. The entrances, they were, they were fine with the entrances. We've gone through all our due diligence of calculation for detention. As Amy said, we meet the site, the, all the site statistics meet all the current regulations as far as impervious areas. We don't, we don't need any waivers, any variances or anything for this project. Wanted to get into a little bit of just what some of the building will look like. Champion Chevrolet was remodeled just a short time ago, and this represents the, a General Motors current look. If you go to other cities, as new, I, I go up to Columbus occasionally to see my daughter, and there's an area outside of Cincinnati where they have several dealerships, and you can see, they're all, they all face the interstate also, and you'll see that these designs are used throughout the country. And if, if it, if you had a case that it's an older dealership, as what happened with Fred, he had to remodel his dealership to meet the standards. So that, that, that's, this is one of the views, and why we're not asking for any sign approvals today is because they also dictate where you put signs on your property. As with Ford, I think we ended up with like fifteen different signs, and we came in for approval all at one time. Some are for convenience, some are just in-and-out and exits and things like that, but, but others, they're mandatory. They have mandatory sizes, mandatory locations. So this, this is like a front view. Here's, here's another view of their current standards. This, this comes out a little bit from the other, other view. They like a lot of glass where people can see into the showrooms, areas for vehicles that have been serviced or they're ready to be picked up by customers. They'll be up there close so they don't have to walk a long distance. Another view that pulls out a little bit, showing where you can see the, see all the glass they use. A sample of their current showrooms. As with Champion, you can go in and see those new Corvettes sitting in there. Every time I go in there, I drool. Beautiful cars. Again, this shows inside where, again, the floors are some type of tile where they can move the cars around, and then you have sales areas, private areas where people can discuss. Oops, back one. And that, that kind of gives you an overall view of, of the site. I'll go back. And then what, what the building will look like. The collision center will have a, a similar type exterior with some of the clad, the metal clad. Will not have all, all the glass, maybe just a, a little area in front where you, where people go in, but we've positioned the parking around and handicapped for both the, the sales area and the collision center, and we think we've, we've brought everything together on the plan that will serve the need for our client. And that is into my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Craigmile, is, you have anything else that you all need to add as far as your presentation? Get you to come back up to the microphone, please.
We don't just expect very, I think the transport-
Need to get you to come back so we can get you on.
Um, in terms of the, the, the traffic, in terms of the C3 zoning, we don't, we don't anticipate frequent heavy trucking coming in there. So I believe that's been one of the issues of a C3 zoning is you don't want heavy traffic, and so we don't expect very many trucks, maybe one or two, two or three trucks a day maybe come in there.
Okay. All right. Does that complete your application, sir? Mr. Craigmile, okay? That is, that completes your application. All right. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of the application? Anyone to speak in support of? Okay, seen none. Is there anyone here that has testimony or questions opposing the application? Is there anyone here with questions or testimony being opposed to the application? Okay, seen no one getting up. With that, we'll now open it up for commissioners' questions, and I'd like to just start, just one quick question, maybe Mr. Garber could, could answer this. On the, your turning radius on your trucks coming in around, around the buildings here, do you have adequate turning radius for these longer, our tractor trailers to make those, those turns without, you know, getting into traffic or, or, you know, cars or whatever?
Yes, yes. In fact, we, we use a, we use a, a turning program we have, and we, what we do is we analyze the, the trucks coming in this way, or a truck coming in this way, and be able to make those turns, and we've set, set that up, so there's plenty of clearance where they don't go into the grass areas or anything like that.
Okay. And what about on the, as far as the, the overhead doors, will it be a complete, a straight drive-through on like the service area? Does, you have doors in the front and doors in the back that people just drive straight through, or?
Yes. If you see the little traffic arrows here, this is that drive-through area right there. And we've got, it's a little bit hard to see, but we got, we got some arrows there and some arrows there. That's where they're allowed to pull in and then go into the service area.
All right. All right. Commissioners, questions for the, of the presentation? Yes, sir. Mr. Horton?
Thank you. I think Mr. Garber probably can answer this. Obviously, this isn't contingent upon the application, but what is the, what is the difference, if you know, between the current dealership in size, like property size, between the current dealership and the application, and of the building size, square footage, between the current dealership? This is just from my education.
Oh, with its current dealership?
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is a little bit larger than its current dealership. Up, that's up on 53.
Mm-hmm. On, on property size, can you, and on, and on square footage size?
Property size, yes, sir. Originally, Mr. Tolstorf was looking at six acres, and we realized that there just wasn't enough room to do everything we needed to do on six, so then he negotiated an additional three acres, and, and the nine acres, it, it just fits perfectly. A lot of the parking that you see is, is set up based on how many cars he wants to be able to have out there to show. So we've, we actually did a count on his current vehicles that he has, and then we put that together with how many are required, you know, for a collision center, how many require for sales area, for employees and things like that. That's how we came up with it. So as you can see, we pretty much filled it up, but, but yet again, we, we, we went back and forth a couple times to make sure we had enough green area, so the nine acres, it's just about, there's almost an acre on the right where the, the city has their, their pump station that comes off of that nine. So effectively, we have about eight acres we're working with, and it worked out just great to be able to fit everything we needed to on the site.
And again, just from my information, the building size, have you got any idea of whether the building here would be twice as large?
Oh, what's there now?
Mr. Tolstorf, I want you to get, I get you to come up if you don't mind, and we'll get your, just name and address for the record.
Yeah, it's Fred Tolstorf with Champion Chevrolet.
Was he sworn in also, Mr. Chairman?
Was.
I didn't see his hand go up at the time, but I don't want to make, make sure we're all okay.
Exactly. Technically, it wasn't, so I did not.
Oh, you did not? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. We'll get you sworn in. Fox.
Do you saw me tell, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I don't want any cross-ups in your application.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Go ahead.
I can answer the, the first question on the acreage. The, the main facility right now has 4.3 acres, and then the dealership across the street is a little over an acre. So it's about 5.3, you know, combined.
Okay.
And then our main service building right now is about 27,000 square feet, almost 28,000, and the body shop is, I'm going to say, right at 12,000. So that building would be a little bit bigger as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And while you're up, Mr. Tolstorf, on the, are, will you all be doing any used car sales here, or is that still going to be in another location?
No, this would be both new and used cars.
Okay, okay, all right. Additional questions? Yes, sir. Mr. McWilliams.
Fred, are you going to maintain any vehicular footprint on 53 once this new facility is open?
I mean, my, my, you know, my long-term strategy, I, I own the property, both those properties as well, so I would plan on divesting eventually out of there and moving everything to, to this facility.
Thank you.
Oh, one question, too. If, if you are approved today, and then with the recommendation going to city council and they approve your zoning change, what's your timeline as far as being up and, and having this facility built?
Well, I mean, a little bit hinges on the economy, but hopefully in three or four years, I'd like to get, get it up and running.
Okay, all right. Additional questions? Additional questions? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Smith? Sorry.
I know that you have a real challenge now with the transport, the unloading of the vehicles, and your program for radius. Transport trucks are longer than they are, especially to put all the beautiful Corvettes on, and I, your program will take into consideration the radius for the, for those transport trucks.
Yes, ma'am. We, the, the program allows us to bring in different types of vehicles, and we usually use a full 53-foot tra- trailer plus the tractor when we're looking at these.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right, seen none. We'll move into, I guess, final statement. Everything?
I'd just like to start off and remind everyone, and one of Fred's various personas is Abraham Lincoln, and so he, I am just shocked that you would ask and question whether he raised his hand to tell the truth.
I don't remember Lincoln either.
Or was that Washington that said, cannot tell that? Anyway, this is a fairly straightforward application for a zoning change from residential to commercial along Commerce Parkway. Section 170020 of the, of the planning and zoning, of the zoning ordinance specifically and expressly permits, quote, "vehicle sales and display," and quote, "vehicle repair." So it's, you know, clearly anticipated a change for C3 zoning. The, the, the various entities in the technol- in the technical review have approved, Fire Department, LaGrange Utilities, the Health Department, Department of Transportation, the County Engineer are all okay, fine with this zoning change. And again, KRS 200, 100 dot 211 is the controlling KRS statute, which is reiterated in the planning, at the zoning ordinance, which requires that the plan, zoning proposal and the development plan be referred to the commission, who then passes a, makes findings of fact and recommendations to the legislative body, which in this case would be the LaGrange City Council, who then has, what, 30 days or 60 days to make an adoption of it. So once, if you all pass it here, we'll then go to the, to the LaGrange City Council, make a similar presentation, and they'll have the opportunity to approve or disapprove it. One of the requirements that you all need to make, as John will, your attorney will tell you, is that you need to make sure that the plan is consistent, not incompatible with the zone, with the planning goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. So in the justification statement that we've laid out in our, in our application, we've pointed out that it is consistent with goal LU dash one, which calls for an orderly development to prevent premature development, so it's consistent with the whole concept of the commercial Parkway. LU, objective LU dash one-one concerns compatibility of available utilities. We've addressed that. Objective LU dash one dash two, object, addresses the sensitivities of soils and slopes, and Dave has done an excellent job on, on the engineering of the, of the stormwater. LU dash three also addresses incentives, economic incentives for compatible development, and, you know, our position is that this will be good for the community economically. LU dash three goal calls for increased tax revenues, which would, if the sales go up, which is good, there'll be more taxes coming in. Workplace development is an objective of LU three dash two. Then some of the transportation issues, we believe that the, the First Street, the traffic off of First Street will eventually be alleviated, move the dealership from, will stop some of the congestion. Likewise, it'd be better room for the large vehicles that would make deliveries. And then environmentally, we're consistent with goal E dash one, which calls for preservation of natural resources, stormwater management, and to try to follow the lay of the land, and preservation of the natural topographic contours and objectives, E dash one dash one and E dash two dash two. So with all that said, we would respectfully request your approval of the zoning change from R2 to C3, and request an approval of the development plan. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Craigmile, thank you, and I assume that completes your application? Okay. Mr. Craigmile, that completes your application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, I will again ask Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline, we will first consider the zoning map amendment on docket PZ 16014, which is a request for a zoning change from R2 residential to C3 general business district. Mr. Urban, would you outline what's being requested?
Your first decision is whether or not to recommend approval, well, to recommend either approval or denial of the zoning map amendment, and there are no binding elements attached to that. As Mr. Craigmile said in his closing statements, they've submitted a justification statement and demonstration of appropriateness. If you were so choose to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, I suggest that you include that justification statement in your decision.
Mr. Carter?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. With that, commissioners, you've heard the request here, or the outline on the docket, on the zoning map amendment request, and this is, we have a request, and it will go to the city council of LaGrange as a recommendation. So Chair would now entertain a motion on that. Oh, Mr. McWilliams, I see your hand. Okay. Sure you don't want it, Mr. Horton?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I move to approve the zoning map amendment presented to us today, to include, I think there were some conditions of approval, were there not?
That's on the development plan.
Just on the development plan, okay. So I just moved to approve the zoning map amendment because it does comply with the objectives of the, of the comprehensive plan. The existing zoning application, I think the proposed zoning application, rather, is a better use for this particular property than the existing. We have been given several examples in our packets that Mr. Craigmile covered relative to land use, the environment, and transportation. And I think that there have been a lot of changes in the economic and physical and social nature of this entire area. So due to that increased commercial development, development for office spaces, residential and mixed use, my motion would be to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Would you add the justification statement in, in, in your motion that has been presented?
Yeah, it's, yes, and it's a recommendations. You're not actually approving it. You're recommending it to LaGrange City Council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Carter, is that adequate?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, good. Do we have a second? Mr. Mesker seconds. Now, we'll open up for discussion on the recommendation on docket PZ 16014 to the LaGrange City Council for a zoning map amendment on approximately nine acres, and the proposed change is from R2 residential to C3 general business district. Is there any discussion? Discussion on the motion to approve. All right, Ms. Fox, we'll call, a call on you to do the vote, and this is a motion to approve. All right, Ms. Fox, we'll call, call on you to do the vote and this is a motion to approve the requested zoning change that will be sent to the LaGrange City Council for their, hopefully, concurrence.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
The docket PZ one six zero one four, the requested zoning map amendment recommendation to the LaGrange City Council has been approved on a vote of ten to zero. So, with that, now the Chair would entertain a motion on docket PZ.
Well, I'm going to give you some direction here.
Oh, okay. I do. Let me get the, get my request out here. The, on docket PZ one six zero one five, which is a development plan request on the nine acres on Commerce Parkway. So, yeah, I'll ask now Mr. Urban to, if he would outline what's being requested here.
Assuming that the LaGrange City Council agrees with your recommendation to change the zoning map amendment, you'd be asked to consider a development plan which would be in compliance with that C-three zoning. In your staff report on page two, you have proposed conditions of approval. They're pretty standard. I, I won't read them all, there are eight. They're typical of what we generally say about no changes to the development plan, no increase in drainage runoff to the state roadways, sight lighting, erosion control plan, must comply with the fire hydrant ordinance, they have to submit a landscape plan and also that the signs be in compliance or come to the planning commission with a program for signs. So, again, that's your consideration of the development plan.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything that needs to be added?
No, sir.
All right. Chair would now entertain a motion on the request for a development plan approval on docket PZ one six zero one five.
So moved.
I'm sorry?
You said, motion to?
Yes, I was requesting a motion on, on the.
I thought you were looking for a second.
No, haven't got the motion yet, so.
Mr. Chairman, defer to Dr. Arvin for this motion.
Okay. Dr. Arvin?
I move approval of the development plan pending the, its approval by LaGrange City Council to include the proposed conditions of approval that Mr. Urban just reviewed.
Okay.
That would be my motion unless the legal counsel recommends something in addition to it.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, adequate motion. Do we have a second? I assume, Mr. Horton, are you seconding it?
Yes, I will.
Second that motion.
All right. Ms. Bonet?
Do we need to also tie in the binding elements that are listed under development plan in our staff report? There are three binding elements.
It would, I guess technically would be a condition of approval on, on the development plan. Usually, we have binding elements on the zoning map amendment, but.
I was just following my staff report.
That's great. I'm glad you caught that. So, is that, is that okay with you, Dr. Arvin, to incorporate those? And then?
End with me.
Okay. All right. Now, we have a motion on the floor to approve docket PZ one six zero one five, the development plan request. Do we have any discussion? Discussion on the motion to approve?
This, this is still just a proposal to send to LaGrange, correct?
No, no. The development plan, once it's approved.
They only got to approve the zoning.
Right. If the LaGrange City Council approves the zoning, then development plan is already approved. They, they don't have any say-so over the development plan. So, yep. All right. Any other questions on the motion to approve?
Questions.
Questions been called. Ms. Fox, if you would, this is a motion to approve on docket PZ one six zero one five, the development plan.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin? Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right. The motion to approve the development plan on docket PZ one six zero one five has been approved on a vote of ten to zero. Thank you all very much. Do you all need to take a, just a few minutes recess here before we start into our next docketed item? Let's take a ten-minute recess so we'll have time to reset. So, we'll take a ten-minute recess.